Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for being with us this afternoon. Today is Tuesday, October 13th. This is a regular voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Chris, welcome home. And you have a few words?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The people of Zeitz, our sister city, got to spend their time in the Sugar Fest. Sugar production is at full swing. Had a 70-meter-long sugar cake that I got to help cut the other day. They had their big dance at night, and it was pretty traditional German music. It was an AC/DC tribute band, so it was quite exciting.
You didn't say what I thought you said.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yeah, but it was good, and I encourage anybody to show up. You know, you're welcome with open arms when you get to our sister city, and we do the same when they show up here, so it was a good time.
Very good. Well, we're glad you're home. Our guest today is Elder Rich Tenny of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, will lead us in invocation, and then we'll do the pledge, and I'll lead, so...
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Our dear Father in Heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity that we have to meet together this afternoon. We are grateful for the grace of God that blesses our lives. We are grateful to be in this wonderful country, a country that allows us the opportunity to grow and to develop and to make choices. We are grateful for these council members and their service in our behalf. We pray that they might be guided and directed as they make decisions to bless the lives of all the citizens of Prescott, Arizona. We pray that as citizens, that we might do our best to serve and to bless those around us. Again, Father in Heaven, we are grateful for this day and the opportunity to counsel together in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge, please.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its fairness, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one proclamation today, and Councilman Chris...
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, caller, roll.
Mayor Kirkendall.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kuknia.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yo.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Lizelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Andy, who's running the store?
Yeah, we got quite the crew here today. This is a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month of October 2015. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over 4 million Americans each year, and whereas 1 in 3 Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence, and whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a higher rate than national average, and whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity, and whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims, now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Prescott do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge the citizens of Prescott to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community.
Mayor, members of the council, city management, thank you for the support you've shown to your police department for increased efforts from our team in addressing domestic violence and sexual assault here in Prescott. And if I could have Lieutenant Bonnie explain maybe some of the reason her team is here with us.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mayor and council, for this opportunity and for really just recognizing this month, among other months of the year, for the efforts not only that the police department, but our community also puts forth to addressing these concerns that truly do impact all of us in this community. And I do have several of my investigators here that focus specifically on those areas of domestic violence and sexual assault. And the Start by Believing campaign is just an example of that, working in conjunction with a proclamation such as this, to really give us the tools that we need to effectively address these issues, successfully represent the victims, and also prosecute the offenders of these crimes. So, thank you.
I am Detective Bernard. I've worked sexual assault and crimes against children.
I'm Deputy Chief Andy Reinhardt.
Detective Keith Crabtree.
Detective Daryl Glass.
Thank all of you for the good work. Okay, let's go to the consent agenda, and it's a long one. Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda before she reads it? Okay, go ahead.
Item A: Approval of minutes for the city council meetings held on September 22nd and October 6th, 2015. Item B: Award of city contract number 2016-033 to WCD Enterprises LLC for custodial services at the Virginia Street Complex and the Sun Doug Transfer Station in an annual estimated amount of $22,740 Facilities Management Fund. Item C: Award of city contract number 2016-086 to Diversified Concrete Crafters in the amount of $12,962.31 for repairs to the engine bay at Fire Station 71-333 White Spar Road. Item D: RP15-003 Revision of plat of Prescott Heights 5th subdivision to subdivide lot 7, 1.13 acres into two lots, creating one new parcel zoning single-family 9, APN 116-17-242, property owner Schisnetz Family Trust. Item E: Adoption of ordinance number 4955-1493, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of a public utility easement from Stone Creek Investments LLC, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to accept said easement. Item F: Ordinance 4953-1491, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the granting of a utility easement to Arizona Public Service Company and Arizona Corporation, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said easement. Item G: Adoption of ordinance number 4954-1492, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of an ingress/egress and public utility easement from Mark Kanzer, and abandon that certain easement described and recorded in Book 1406, page 83, on file in the office of the Yavapai County Recorder, Yavapai County, Arizona, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to accept and abandon said easement. And item F: Award of individual contracts to six separate vendors to provide waterworks parts and materials budgeted in the Water Fund in FY 2016 in the following not-to-exceed amounts. One, Dana Kepner Company Incorporated, $15,000, city contract number 2016-076. Item Two, HD Supply, $20,000, city contract number 2016-077. Item Three, Peoria Winnelson, $20,000, city contract number 2016-078. Item Four, Farnsworth Wholesale, $25,000, city contract number 2016-079. Item Five, Arizona Waterworks, $20,000, city contract number 2016-080. And item Six, Ferguson Waterworks, $45,000, city contract number 2016-081. And that's the extent of the consent agenda.
Okay, now any questions?
No, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items A or 1A through 1H.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, let's vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, liquor license consent agenda.
On the liquor license consent agenda, there's one application for a special event liquor license, or a Series 15 special event liquor license, is for the student veterans organization to be held at the Holiday Courtyard on Saturday, November 7th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. The application has been reviewed and determined to be in compliance with city requirements and is being recommended for approval. And as you know, the state law states that a physical location may not be issued more than 12 special event licenses during the same calendar year, and this would be number eight for the Holiday Courtyard for this calendar year.
Okay, so there's four more to go.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Comments from the audience? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move...
Go ahead.
I move to forward special event liquor license application 2A to the Arizona State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
Second. Second. Motion made in seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, move on to the regular agenda, item A.
Item 3A: Public hearing and consideration of a new liquor license application for a Series 12 restaurant license from Randy D. Nation's applicant. The applicant is Bill's Pizza located at 107 South Cortez Street. Mr. Nation is requesting a new license for a Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Bill's Pizza. The police department and the community development department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with the requirements, and the application and license fees have been paid, and the application has been posted at the proposed location for the required 20 days. No public comments have been received, and I believe the owner is in attendance.
Come on up. Let everybody look you over.
My name's Taylor Smythe. My dad and I... Bill's actually basically an uncle to me. My dad and him have been best friends since eight years old, so I've grown up with him, and I've learned a lot from him, and I've been working with him for the last year, learning the recipes, all the, you know, special details of how he makes his restaurants so successful, and now we're excited to take over. And he will actually be staying on as a general manager for the first two years, just to kind of guide us if we ever have any issues. And we look forward to just continuing the same vision that he's put, you know, or set in place in the past.
Very good. Well, we wish you good luck.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, guys.
Now we need a motion to move.
Mayor, I move to...
Recommend.
I move to approve for recommend liquor license application number 12133633 for a Series 12 restaurant license for Bill's Pizza located at 107 South Cortez Street.
Second.
Motion made seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay. Move on to item B.
Item 3B: Public hearing for a special use permit, SUP15-002, for the installation of four stealth wireless antenna arrays behind the rooftop parapet of the Room Store located at 3090 Gateway Boulevard. Site zoning is business regional. Property owner is Store Master Funding III, LLC, APN 103-20-570J.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council.
Afternoon, Tom.
That's a fairly straightforward request. Under the proposal, T-Mobile will be installing stealth hidden installation of the mechanical equipment and antennas at each of the four corners of the Room Store building at Gateway Mall. The... As the city clerk indicated, the zoning is business regional. No aspect of this request exceeds the standards within the business regional zoning district, and the Planning and Zoning Commission considered this at their September meeting and voted unanimously to approve. With that, we have Declan Murphy representing T-Mobile here today in the event that you have any questions for him.
Questions, council?
I have a question. Tom, when you say stealth, you mean they won't be able to be seen from anywhere on the ground level?
That's correct, and this will give you an idea of the antenna array. As proposed, the antenna will actually be hidden behind the existing parapet wall, and the corners will have a material not unlike what was described at the time that the Granite Street Garage AT&amp;T proposal came through. So, it won't be visible unless you're well off of the highway and away from the store, literally half a mile or more from, in some of the residential areas.
Okay.
Anyone else? Any comments from the public? Okay, thank you, Dan.
Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve special use permit, P15-002, for the installation of four wireless antenna arrays and accessory mechanical equipment at the Room Store located at Gateway Mall.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Go to C.
Item C: Approval of city contract number 2016-082, a two-year professional services agreement with Frontburner Media LLC for public relations and social media services related to tourism development in a total amount not to exceed $48,000.
Good afternoon, Don.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. The Office of Tourism is requesting approval for a two-year agreement with, for public relations and social media services in the amount of $48,000 with Frontburner Media LLC. The Office of Tourism has been utilizing the services of this vendor since 2013, following a competitive bid process and council approval. Frontburner Media was selected for this new two-year agreement following a competitive bid process which attracted tall responses. Frontburner Media submitted the most favorable response of 2,000 per month, or 24,000 per year. Competing proposals ranged from almost $35,000 to $264,000 annually. With your approval, the new agreement would start on November 1st. As with all tourism office expenses, this contract would be funded from bed tax, as included within the $290,000 allocated for tourism marketing as approved by the council on August 25th, 2015. Without taking any questions you might have.
Greg.
I'm gonna probably be beating this into everybody the next couple of months, and I know you mentioned it, but I want to reiterate it. This $48,000 comes from where?
Bed tax.
And do we pay police, fire, park, or library out of the bed tax?
We do not.
Okay, so $48,000 cannot go into our budget problems on our general fund, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, council?
Yeah, I got one.
Yeah.
While I understand what you just said, I've been a supporter of basic services first all the way through this budget cycle, and I fail to see where it's good tourism promotion when we're four and five cops down, four and five firemen down, and I would think it'd be a little more... I think there needs to be a little more effort given, even if by nobody else and through legal, to define how we can address some of the issues we've got, putting the money we have to use in one bucket to take care of our problems, rather than looking for reasons not to. So, I don't support this.
Anyone else?
I have a question. I guess I would like somewhat of an explanation of what the social media folks are going to do. I remember back in the day where we had an advertisement lady before you were hired, and she's no longer here because we felt like it wasn't being satisfactorily done and the money was being wasted. How would you assure me that this is important?
Well, with today's technology and with the widespread use of social media, this is a primary channel for communicating with a wide variety of people, including the tourists that come to visit us, as well as decision-makers such as the media and bloggers and others who influence opinion. So, this is one of the best ways we have to reach them. Our... Right, just for example, on Facebook right now, we have over 3,600 people that are following us. Each one of our posts, and there are three to four per week, have a viewership of anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000, sometimes even more, for a single one, so it's a highly efficient way for us to get our message out. I should also probably mention to you that last year, last fiscal year, we generated over $60 million worth of media coverage for Prescott in that 12-month period. So, we are definitely getting the word out about Prescott.
I guess what I am asking more so is the question, we don't have anybody that can do this on staff without going out and spending an additional $48,000.
Councilman Blair, Mayor and council, we, two years ago, before we started this contract, we did have a staff person. We had a three-quarter-time marketing coordinator that was helping us with that. We've decided, we made the decision two years ago to prioritize direct sales, and we replaced that position with a sales manager. And so, the sales manager is based in Phoenix and calls on tour operators and meeting planners. So, that position was eliminated, so we do not have anybody to do that on staff. And if we did, it would cost us a lot more than 24,000 per year.
Yeah, Mayor, I got a question. The TAC, which is made up of the industry professionals that know about this and collect this tax for us, do they support this?
They do.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just had a comment, Mayor.
Sure, go.
Relative to Councilman Blair's question. Social media moves extremely rapidly, and it requires somebody who's on it all the time. And I can see why your staff wouldn't have the time to do this and why we need a contractor.
Comments from the public? Question? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve city contract number 2016-082, a two-year professional service agreement with Frontburner Media LLC for public relations and social media services in a total amount not to exceed $48,000.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, vote please.
Passes 5 to 2, Councilman Blair and Councilman Lamerson, dissent team.
Moving on to item D.
Item D: Approval of 1 city contract number 2016-075, an agreement with the Greater Prescott Regional Economic Partnership, GPREP, and 2, the annual membership payment for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $40,000.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. This item requests approval of GPREP's contract with the city of Prescott, and approval of the city's annual payment to GPREP in the amount of $40,000. And councilman, yes, this is a general fund allocation. GPREP is in its first full year of operations with its new executive director, Rich Heath, is here with us today. GPREP's organizational work is finally behind them. This year is a focus on the issues for which we originally worked to create GPREP. Their budget for FY 2016 has been approved at approximately $260,000, with about a third of that money going to marketing and business development activities. The proposed budget breakdown is approximately 53% to 47%, with 53% on the private side of the equation for FY 2016. The focus, I said, is on the key activities for which GPREP was created, which is marketing to out-of-state businesses, business attraction particularly for Southern California, and to the site selector community, and prospect management, focusing on lead generation and projects that come to us through individual leads or from ACA, the Arizona Commerce Authority. Funds for the GPREP contract are contained within the Department of Economic Initiatives' FY 2016 budget, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have or ask Rich to come down if you have any questions for him. Thank you.
Steve.
I used to have a question, city manager or city attorney. Could this not be skewed in a way, based upon economics and based upon tourism being a key component of economics, to use $40,000 out of bed tax for this item rather than using $40,000 out of general fund?
Mayor and council, the statute that allows, or that essentially prohibits the city from charging what's called a, or considered a discriminatory tax, has an exception to it that allows us to charge a bed tax, or essentially a booze-borne bed tax if we chose, provided, however, that that tax revenue is spent on what the statute refers to as tourism, marketing, and promotion. So, to answer your question, to the extent that you can legitimately proportion out what part of GPREP, or what part of, you know, this, the work that GPREP does helps promote and market tourism and visitors, then yes, you could. But it's a question of really sort of what can, what can you legitimately justify in saying that GPREP does as far as tourism, marketing, and promotion? What percentage, and then you could justify that percentage of this contract being funded by bed tax.
As short-changed as we are on the general fund, I would suggest before we absolute take $40,000 out of general fund, that we look at doing that. If there's 50% that can be attributed to economics associated with tourism, it would seem to me if we could save $20,000 in the general fund would be better than none at all.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I appreciate what GPREP is trying to do, but given the circumstances we're in with trying to finance our public safety, and every dollar counts, and this is where we started talking about this six, seven months ago, every dollar does count to public safety, and I just can't support this right now.
Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Very similar to the last item. You know, 40 here, 48 there, a little this, a little that. I'm not prepared to kiss another cop goodbye, so I can't support this. It means it's not an essential. Public safety comes first. Basic service comes first.
Thanks, Mayor. I think we shouldn't forget that the voters just ratified a general plan, and one very important aspect of that general plan is that we need more good-paying manufacturing jobs in Prescott. And that's one thing that I know Jeff and his staff have been diligently pursuing. We're getting there, and we need GPREP to help us do that. We need a broader net for recruiting and attracting manufacturers here. I'm very much in favor of our chipping in at the same level as Prescott Valley, because you know what's gonna happen if we don't. All those industries are gonna go to Prescott Valley, and they won't even look at Prescott. So, I think we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot if we didn't approve this $40,000.
Mayor, thank you. I've been a staunch supporter of us being a member of GPREP ever since it was invented, ever since the first discussions about regional cooperation have come to fruition. And without getting into finite detail, because the transaction's not complete, had it not been for GPREP's initiative to have a conversation with an employer in our region, and then that passing off to our city staff, we'd have a current manufacturer that does almost $5 million a year of exporting from Prescott with 20 jobs leaving this community. Not only are they going to be retained here, they're going to be expanding their workforce. It's a prime example of the cooperation agreement that's been agreed to between all the parties in GPREP, and it's something that we can look at to our staff who have stepped up to the plate, been involved, to make sure that this company stays here, that those jobs stay here. I agree wholeheartedly that we've got to deal with the general fund, but if we cut off tourism promotion, say, "Oh, we're not gonna tell people about Prescott, oh, we're not gonna go out and look for people to bring jobs here," then the long-term vision of that is, we might as well make more cuts in the general fund now because there will be less money in five years to deal with it. I fully support spending the $40,000. We get more out of it than what we put into it, and I think it's something that we, as a city, should be involved in, period.
Chris.
I agree with you, Charlie, and I think, Gene, you said it right. I think we're getting there. I've seen this work in other communities very well, once it gets up to speed and once it gets running. You know, and we're talking about, well, we gotta, we gotta send it to public safety. We just spent, about 10 minutes ago, over $22,000 to clean the toilets in two facilities that we got in Prescott. You know, at the waste transfer station, and I think it was at the shop. Nobody said a word about that. You know, is that something that we could do with staff in-house, ourselves? Yes. $40,000 to keep the promotion of Prescott moving, to get decent-paying jobs here. We promote tourism. It gets us a lot of revenue and a lot of, a lot of taxes coming into this community, but tourism jobs don't pay. They don't, they're not a living wage type of job. We need to get the manufacturing in that lets people raise a family, that lets, and we need to continue down that path. And if we cut it off, I think with what Charlie said, you know, okay, maybe we haven't seen a whole lot out of it so far, but I think it's getting its engines running. We gotta keep promoting tourism. We gotta keep promoting ourselves as a place to locate your business. It's all about retention, expansion, and attraction, and if you don't do it, other people are doing it, and they'll get it. So, I'll continue to support economic development, and I wish we could have gotten more done in the last four years, but I still believe it's the way to go.
Steve.
Last comment. I hear Charlie talk about a business and job retention and stuff, and it may be very well-worthy of someone to give us a report on what those are. I'm sitting here in the dark, not understanding what GPREP's done in a year. We used to have another group prior to GPREP, same deal. If it is important to the...
If it is important to the region, it's important enough to bring this council back, some dialogue of what's in the meal, what's happening, what is not. I have not seen that happen in a year's time. I would support this, but I want to see somebody make some effort of getting 20,000 out of bed tax and moving it together with the general fund. We are strapped in the general fund. I support economic development throughout the region, but I want to report in the future and not sit here and try to guess what we've done. And Charlie alluded to it. I have no clue what he's even talking about. Maybe I'm just lost, but I don't think so. So I think a quarterly report from the people that we're giving the money to would be at best a, a great thing to do.
Jim?
Thank you, thank you for bringing that up, Larry. I really appreciate it, Tom. In fact, the matter is we have gotten reports back over and over and over about how many cops we don't have and how many firemen we don't have, how we don't have any money to go out and get new ones. I just saw some money going out the door that we could have gone and got at least one. So, you know, I'm pretty well sold on where I'm at.
Charlie?
Mayor, purely an observation and, you know, I did, Steve, I agree. I think an update would be valuable to this item. I know that that was a big topic when we approved this was that feedback. I know that we've gotten some feedback from our staff about some economic development projects that are going on. In order for us to get some clarity there, I'm not opposed to waiting till the next voting meeting to approve this item. If that's what makes sense so that we can schedule to get a presentation and also get an answer to your question about funding sources.
I think that only makes sense. I, I mean, it's been a year and it was a struggle last year, let me just say that, at $40,000 from this council because we knew we were going to be coming up on tight times. We went ahead and moved forward with $40,000 and I would really like to know about a presentation and then I also would like to know about the funding level. So I would support deferring this until the next meeting.
Yeah. Just a, just a comment. The, correct me if I'm wrong, but we put $40,000 in the budget.
Correct.
This year for this project. And GPREP's board has been meeting on a regular basis and they have their budget now totally approved by their board. So we approved the 40,000 in our budget. They're anticipating the 40,000 in their budget. It seems like, you know, it's a legitimate something to talk about, but it appears to me our timing is all wrong. This should have been a question during the budget preparation, not today.
Mayor, all due respect, we brought these things up during the budget and they, and we always were told the same thing, well, we haven't spent it so we can vote on it later and we're here and we're, we're voting on it, so.
Well, you, you may not have, it, it, it may be more difficult to spend the money some other place than what it was appropriated here, is what I'm getting at, yeah. Is that it? Do we have a motion? To enact this now or do you want to set it aside for another meeting?
Do we want to take any public comment, Mayor?
Yeah.
If there's anyone that would like to speak.
Anyone from the public? Dan, I'm sorry, I missed you.
Well, I hadn't said I was coming up yet. Anyway, I agree with Gene about the general plan. There is a whole section on economic development and it clearly, a strategy says be engaged with efforts to promote economic development in the region. I personally, I mean, I don't, they probably aren't spending the whole budget tomorrow or next week. I think the idea of seeing if we could get a quarter or a half of this out of the tourism budget would be a good thing to do. So I personally suggest ultimately we plan on approving this, but put it off until we can get a report on what the value was. I think we're going to find out that it's worth every bit of the 40,000 and in the long run, we'd probably get something more than $40,000 worth of benefit back. So I think ultimately we should, it should be approved, but if we can manage to get 10,000 of that or 20,000 of that from the bed tax, I think that would be great. It would be worthwhile to wait a week or it would be two. But, you know, I, I think tabling it with the, with the idea of letting GPREP come back and say, here's what we gave you for it and, and then let John figure out how, how much of it we can call tourism promotion. So that would be my suggestion.
Thanks, Dan. Jim, before we go back to the audience, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, it was in the general plan, so was quality basic services. And you know, over and over and over, we keep dumping off some of the quality basic service and at some point you got to draw a line in the sand. And the line in the sand comes, you know, I've heard over and over and over for the last year and a half, two years, we're down in both police and fire. We don't have the money. We don't have the money to take care of PSPRS. We don't have this, we don't have that. Well, quote, "We can take care of ourselves, but I'm not willing to spend 80-some thousand dollars that I know I could redirect this way different." So that's where I'm at.
Chris?
Once again, just, I like, we just spent over $22,000 for someone to clean toilets in two places. This attracts jobs. You know, before I got on the city council, I batted for the other team. I was playing on that team to the east of us and I saw that when, when the engine starts to hit it, it works really well. I am a recipient of the quality of life that economic development brings. I mean, I'll go back, I was shoveling asphalt like a lot of this, people in this town working for 7:50 an hour. I got a job in a light manufacturing factory, doubled my salary overnight, had benefits, had inside work that didn't count on construction. These, these jobs literally change lives and then they have more to spend. They have more to spend on, on the store downtown. They have more to spend on, on the restaurants. And if we don't tell somebody that we're out there, they, they won't know we're out there. We're talking about all of our plans at the airport. We're going to fill that area with light manufacturing. Well, we got to tell somebody about that. We just built a intersection not too long ago for what, $26 million that feeds into an industrial park? Not a lot's been going on out there. We need to tell somebody that we're out there. And, you know, we need to get, something that GPREP's been working on is getting a spec building built. You know, we need, and Jeff, you could probably attest to some of this too. When they come looking, they want 20,000 or 50,000 square foot where they can just move in and go. And economic development, both here and at GPREP, has been working on that. If we don't get those kind of things moving, we're not going to have the kind of quality jobs here that change lives and you're going to still have people struggling to survive day in and day out.
Charlie, you're back.
Mayor, thanks. You know, thinking everything through, at, at this point, I think where I would stand is I'd be prepared to make a motion to approve this, asking that within the next 30 days, we do get a report on GPREP's activity and that we direct the city manager and budget director to look at the funding sources that can be used outside the general fund. But as far as I'm concerned, regional cooperation on economic development is the future of us being a financially sustainable city, so.
Okay, so your motion is to approve?
Yes, I would be willing to make that motion to do so.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Let's vote, please.
Passes five to two, Councilman Lemerson and Councilman Lozelle, dissenting.
Okay. Let's move along to item E.
Item E, award of city contract number 2016-083 for the Willow Creek Road fencing project to American Fence Company in the amount of $111,447.30.
Can I ask a question, Mayor? Before we go any further, has that been noted that we're going to at the next council meeting get your comments back to us?
Part of his motion.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think you said 30 days. That was my understanding, but certainly we can come back with that.
Thank you.
Preferably the study session in November would be fantastic.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This item is for consideration of a ward of a contract to American Fence Company for the fencing for the Willow Creek Road realignment project between Pioneer Parkway and the Deepwell Ranch roundabout at Highway 89. This is the first element of the Willow Creek Road realignment project that's currently out to bid. There will be gates installed to provide access to the adjacent ranch properties. We went through our bid process where we advertised for two consecutive weeks, had it out for a number of weeks total. We did receive one bid from American Fence Company. This is a smaller pool of potential contractors that would be bidding on this, so we weren't surprised with one, there are a couple, but only one bid. It was for, within a few hundred dollars of the engineer's estimate, so we felt it was a reasonable bid. The schedule of the project is, hopefully it's awarded today and then the construction would start in the next two weeks and be completed by the end of November, which is right at the time that the main construction project is tentatively scheduled to begin construction. So we wanted to get the area fenced, which was a mutual agreement with the property owner to make sure that the construction activities stayed within the right-of-way that's for the project. The funding for the project is coming from the Streets and Open Space Fund. There's also an IGA for the project with Yavapai County that will fund 50% of this, up to a agreed amount, $3 million total for the whole project. And if there's any other questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
Jim?
No, I don't have a question, but I like the idea of reasonably cooperating with Yavapai County and the flood district. I think that's really good.
Steve?
I guess just one question, a side question.
Yes.
Two, two items. Number one, I would assume it's going to be ranch fencing barbed wire.
Correct. It's a, I think it's a four-wire game fence, barbed wire.
So you're saying it's a game fence? Does that mean the bottom rung is barbedless?
I believe so, yes.
I would like to make sure that that's correct.
Okay.
And also the other question is the existing footing that's out there on Willow Creek Road that has barbed wire fence on both sides, when we build a new road, does that piece of property revert back to the James Trust or the Jame Ranch?
The, are you, the existing part of the roadway that is not part of the realignment between 89 and the existing Willow Creek Road and the new alignment will become, revert back to the James Ranch family.
Okay, so that the asphalt will actually come up and it'll be part of the ranch line?
No, the ranch, the road, the property owner requested that the asphalt remain.
Okay.
So it's a save, cost savings to us.
Bargain at any cost.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Mayor, thanks. Just in follow-up to Steve's question, I believe there's quite a few utilities also that are running along the current alignment. So that's going to become a utility usement or in perpetuity.
That is correct. The utilities, we've been coordinating and the utility companies have been working with the property owner to see if they stay or if they are going to relocate. I know some of the utilities are relocating with this project, others are staying there until development occurs out there and then they'll relocate out of that area.
And then going back to the 30,000-foot view for a second.
Yes.
So when someone asks, why are we doing this? The realignment is part of the larger scale picture to accomplish the 89 widening from the roundabout down to 89A, correct?
That is correct.
And this is a balance where the city is splitting this cost with the county to create the opportunity for ADOT to fix part of the road that needs to be finished.
That is correct. This Willow Creek Road realignment is in some sense a, a traffic bypass during construction, a relief valve when they're both improved to get traffic flowing into Prescott and out of Prescott. And this is the building block that we've been coordinating with the county and state on that south segment of 89 improvement.
And last but not least, this fence project is the precursor to the beginning of construction within this area.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This $111,000 is coming from Streets and Open Space, correct?
The Streets and Open Space Fund, correct.
Okay, not from the general fund?
That is correct.
And this money could not be spent in the general fund?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Quick question. We, we appropriated this money three years ago?
Yes.
Set aside in the joint venture with the county?
That is correct.
So has it not already been allocated and will be paid out of money that's already been allocated, not current money? Did we set aside the money, I guess is what I'm asking?
Well, Mayor, the project was approved to be funded by the two parties.
Right.
And each of those parties has budgeted the money in the particular fiscal year in which it would be spent.
Okay, okay. Sorry, Chris.
Yeah, Mayor, just wanted to kind of expand a little bit on, on something Jim said and you said too, where the county and the city are throwing in on this. When you take the big picture in, you got to acknowledge ADOT as well because they're going to build the road that cuts across to the golf course and then they're going to give that, revert that back to us as well as doing 89. So really this was a room full of engineers that got together, put their heads together and everyone agreed. Everybody came with money, everyone came with IGAs and now you're seeing it and it's going to happen.
Correct. Audience, comment? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mayor moved to award city contract number 2016-083 for the Willow Creek Road fencing project to American Fence Company in the amount of $111,447.30.
Second. Second? Motion made in seconded. Vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Jim, yours on agreeing.
This is a basic service.
Okay, item F.
Item F, approval amendment number one to city contract number 2015-081A1 for the Hummingbird Way culvert replacement design project with line engineering in an amount not to exceed $71,550.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This next item for your consideration is again a contract amendment to an existing professional services agreement for $71,550. Just a little bit of background, in the summer of 2013, flooding the Yavapai Hills subdivision area in Alberston Wash caused damage and failure to the Hummingbird Pipe Culvert Crossing. Consequently, in June 2015, council approved a professional services agreement to have a consultant evaluate the culvert crossings at Hummingbird Way, Hornet Drive and Sunrise Boulevard. The consultant's task, which was called Phase One, was to look at the hydrology, the floodplain boundaries and the hydraulics of those culvert crossings. What the consultant found is that the culvert crossing at Hummingbird and Sunrise is insufficient. The consultant is proposing, the staff agrees with, is removing the existing pipes and replace with a, a single-span culvert that will allow for better flow and reduce the potential flooding upstream. The crossing at the Hornet was found hydrologically adequate, however, it showed kind of disrepair, so we're planning to line it and extend the, the service life on that culvert. The next step, which we are calling Phase Two, now that we know exactly what to do, is to have the consultant design the culvert crossings and associated roadway improvements at Hummingbird and Sunrise. Just very quickly, design services will include, of course, designing the culvert crossings, utility line relocations and replacements, construction services, geotechnical services and potholing services. The proposed schedule is award of contract October 13th, pre-design kickoff the week of the 19th of October and design will be completed on or before March 2016. And with that said, I'll be, we're happy to answer any questions.
Steve?
Question. With it, not that I'm opposed to keeping our businesses busy in the City of Prescott, but why couldn't this have been designed in-house with our own engineers, one? And number two, is Yavapai County Flood District going to give us any funds for this water issue? And have they been checked with?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilman Blair, this is something that we can do in-house, but there's, we have a lot of projects. Right now, we're finishing up on the Sun Dog paving project and we're hard at work on the Alarkin Carlton. It's a project that I brought before you all, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. That project's $3 million, top of my head, that's 3,000 hours. We're hard at work. We're on deadlines for that because it's, it's tied to an IGA. So yes, to answer your question, yes, we can. However, right now, there's plenty of projects to do in-house. We actually, more projects than we can do in-house with the existing staff that we have.
That's a fair response. I, I often hear, we have all these engineers that sit down on Virginia Street. I want the public to know why these are going out to an engineering. If we can do them in-house and it's a logical response that if we are too busy down there with the number of projects we have on the docket, that you would go out for some of these smaller things. Second part of that is Yavapai Flood District going to pay any part of this?
Mayor, Councilman Blair, not, not this project, no.
Have they been asked? Have they been asked?
To my knowledge, no. I do not know.
Well, if that's the case, I would suggest that we ask.
We can.
That's what our tax monies go for in Yavpai County, and Yavpai Hills was in Yavpai County at one time, and those creeks were in Yavpai County at one time, and those people that live out there are paying taxes to the flood district, and they got flooded. So I would suggest that we ask the question.
Right. We definitely will ask. One thing that's noteworthy is, there's a cap on flood control monies. And I do know, because of the Alarkin Carlton and the other proposed drainage improvements downtown, which is our priority focus, it's, we're looking three, four, or five years before we could tap into any new monies. So we can ask, we can definitely put it on the docket, but the question is, we know we have a flooding problem, we know that the culverts are inadequate, do we want to wait five years? And I think-
They won't, they can't look at the project and say, "We don't have money this year", but we will go ahead and do the project, and we will fund it next year. They won't do that? I mean, again, asking the question is worth it.
Absolutely.
The answer's always no, if you don't ask.
True. But again, it's, and of course, we'll talk to them, and they're very nice folks, I'm sure they'll... But again, we do have those downtown drainage projects that are basically taking all the monies. Basically, we have more drainage projects than what the money we can get from flood control.
Thank you.
You have? Charlie?
Mayor, thank you. Charles, just a quick question. Because this is a name, Wash, are we going to run into any 404 permits or anything? I didn't see that outlined in their scope.
I don't believe so. I think the amount of, typically you get into 404 issues if you're excavating a lot or getting into. I don't, I think the footprint will be small enough where it won't trigger a 404.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick one. To speed the project up by going to outside engineer, does that mean that we've got the money to immediately put the project out and get the job done, rather than letting, after the plans are all drawn, let them lay?
That, Mayor, yes, we do have the funding available for the, to do the project.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions from the public?
It's me again. I didn't hear anyone say where it's being funded from. Streets and open space?
The, I can answer that question.
I didn't hear anyone answer.
I'm sorry, I fell asleep at the wheel.
Go ahead.
Yes, the funding is available through Streets and Open Fund. Sorry about that.
I reread that, but I'm glad you brought it up. Thank you, Daniel.
Did you have some?
No, that was it.
Okay. Okay, anyone else, public? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve amendment number one to city contract number 2015-081A1 for the Hummingbird Way culvert replacement design project with lion engineering in an amount not to exceed $71,550 and no cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay. Item G.
Item G, approval of a settlement agreement with Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, ADEQ, for the Watson Lake total maximum daily loads. The settlement was tabled at the 9/22/2015 meeting.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is our settlement agreement that would resolve our appeal of the TMDL issued for Watson Lake. As we discussed this morning, the city staff believes this meets the objectives of our appeal, it is an appropriate resolution of this matter. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
We worked it over pretty good this morning, and I think the council has probably well got all the information we need, but let's go straight to the public and see if there's any more comment this afternoon, okay? Good afternoon.
My name is Chuck Budinger. I live at 1802 Short Line Lane in City Limits. I was here for the last discussion when you tabled the settlement agreement. I think it still needs to be tabled or a different approach to be taken. There are significant delays that could impede the city's ability to maintain its water portfolio. A April 6, 2010, meeting minutes stated that the city needs to discharge a certain amount of water over the dam. If it can't do that, ADWR may actually relook at our portfolio and may reduce it if we can't continue the water over the dam. The reason I bring this up is because we need to start working on the lake. This is a lake TMDL, not a watershed TMDL. The settlement will delay that. There are other avenues that can be taken to develop a lake plan, and I understand this morning, that was discussed. What I'm talking about is a Corps of Engineers aquatic ecosystem restoration program that is available for a feasibility study. They will pay $100,000 total. Anything over $100,000 for the feasibility study will be shared by the city at a 40% match. I also understood that staff has been in touch with the Corps of Engineers and said that this project is not sufficient for this funding. I know the people at the Corps of Engineers. I have on-demand access to the people at the Corps of Engineers. I've met with the fellow that administers the program at least nine times. I have drawn this out on a napkin at a restaurant at lunch, explaining it to them. I have also discussed other projects similar to it, where other cities went for the same program but asked for the wrong thing and were rejected. And I just want to make sure we're asking for the right thing. The reason we want to ask for aquatic restoration is because it will solve the problem with the lake. One of the things that we need to do is dredge the lake down to a certain depth so that the sunlight will not cause the nutrients to interact with the water and cause chlorophyll and other cyanobacteria to develop. This is important for wildlife. They dive, birds come in and dive, they swim, they walk on the beach, somewhat like us. But all these things can be done with a feasibility study from the Corps of Engineers to actually match what we need to do or what has been recommended in reports to ADEQ and in the recommendations for the TMDL. So the city would be in compliance if it did not select a settlement agreement but went the other way and approached the lakes through the Corps of Engineers. Additional sampling can be done to verify compliance to the water quality standards, and part of this settlement is to sample now to try and modify the water quality standards, whereas a better approach is to actually get the work done and dredge it, and then come back and measure and see what our water quality standards are. Dredging the lake will definitely remove that cycling process that causes the eutrophication of the lakes, the generation of algae in the lake, reduction of dissolved oxygen in the lake. So I'd really like you guys to think about postponing it again, because a postpone of a couple of weeks while we develop a different approach, either the Watershed Improvement Council, which is the legitimately-directed program through the TMDL to address all this sort of thing, is taken to, this issue is taken to the Watershed Improvement Council and ADEQ and discussed there. So I'd like to see this delayed again, because if it's delayed now for a few months, or weeks, rather, we're not going to delay it for three to five years, like the settlement says. That's too long. We're going to have a serious problem with phosphorus and nitrogen, algae, toxic bacteria, and/or a problem with our water supply. So anyway, I know I'm late, I wish I was here this morning, but I think it's too important to leave, and it needs to be delayed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Charlie?
Mayor, thank you. Chuck, just to respond on a couple of fronts, I know that this has been an ongoing conversation, and this morning, a lot of this ground was covered. In our conversations with staff, and my understanding, and then I'll let staff correct me if I'm wrong, by accepting the settlement agreement, all that that is doing is opening the door for us to modify the TMDL in the future through a series of steps. I agree with the majority of what you said, that there is a lot of work to be done. This does not tie the city's hands on how we're going to address the lakes, but it creates the opportunity for us to find solutions. And, you know, a week ago, or two weeks ago, I was totally opposed to the settlement agreement. But after all of the work with staff and really starting to understand where we are, what our options are, and what the next logical step is, I'm going to support approving the settlement agreement today, but understanding that it does not tie our hands to what we need to do to fix the lakes. More than anything, it tells us to continue to look at our options and come up with our proposal to deal with it, while we also let the science side of it figure out whatever it is they want to figure out on their modeling. Is that a fair statement from me? Did I misspeak on any of the key items?
I don't believe you did. I think that's a fair statement. This is in no way a delay tactic, because there's nothing for us to gain from delaying. By settling our appeal of the TMDL, we actually get to the process sooner than we would if we were to litigate it. If we were to litigate it, this process could take a few years. We don't know the outcome. We may be back where we are now. By agreeing to the settlement, we begin taking those steps that are necessary to clean up Watson Lake. It doesn't prevent us from speaking with the Army Corps of Engineer when we're seeking an implementation plan for this, nor does it prevent us from taking any other options that we may want to do to clean up the lake. This is only the first step in a long process of figuring out how we correct all of the problems with Watson Lake. Additionally, there's no way for us to avoid this TMDL. It's a process that's set up by the Clean Water Act. It has to go into effect. Our option now is, we either agree to this settlement, through which the city can have some kind of input and ensure that the data at this first stage is correct, or we reject the settlement agreement, we go through the litigation process and sort of let the dice fall where they may.
Could I speak?
Jane? Yes, go ahead.
To that, I don't understand why there's a litigation process. None of the other permit holders in this watershed are going through a litigation process. The Clean Water Act, the permits that the city of Prescott and the other permit holders in the watershed have written into their permits that you can modify the terms and conditions of the TMDL as you go along, which is what the settlement agreement is. There are three separate, four separate sections of the TMDL that describe exactly the same process as the settlement agreement. If I could read the executive summary. ADEQ will work with stakeholders to update the 2012 watershed improvement plan, identify prioritized watershed sampling for source determination, that is, where's the stuff coming from. This is all what's in the settlement. Identify and prioritize locations for application of best management practices, support development of a lake management plan. Right in the TMDL. All this stuff is right in the TMDL. None of this had to be appealed, none of this had to be, has to be taken to court. Another section. Page 41 of the TMDL, the final TMDL. Specific reductions from each permittee are not quantifiable at this time due to a lack of discharge monitoring data. ADEQ will incorporate these data and reductions in future revisions of the watershed improvement plan, as discussed in Section 9 of the TMDL. So all these things are in the TMDL. The state set up a framework to mitigate these differences, to mitigate these unquantifiable data, and to allow us to move forward with a lake management plan. The city, by developing this settlement agreement, or taking the settlement agreement, I fear is going it alone and abandoning the TMDL and doing it on their own, rather than with the other permit holders, the other stakeholders. There are a lot of public people that are very involved, that have been doing a lot of creek sampling and stream sampling and walking up and down streams and mapping them and that sort of thing. So the settlement is really a reiteration of what's actually written in the TMDL. So the whole point of litigation, if you reject the appeal, is a canard. There's no reason to proceed with legal action if you reject us. The point is, you can say, "We're not going to vote and accept the settlement, but we are going to work with the Watershed Improvement Council and with ADEQ and with the Corps of Engineers, and we're going to comply with the terms and conditions of the permit and support development of lake management plan." Excuse me, I've got a dry mouth. And to move forward with source identification, all the things that were talked about in the settlement agreement. So that's why I keep coming back here on this, because it just doesn't make sense for the city to sue to appeal a violation notice is a very good idea, especially if you think you've done what you're supposed to do. But to appeal a broad-based program, you're not in violation of anything. So there's no reason for an appeal, anyway. That's my answer.
Could we res-
Thanks, Mayor. We had almost a two-hour session this morning. I'm sorry you missed it. Sorry. Because a lot of these issues were addressed. I mean, the bottom line is, the city owns the lakes. That's why we have to be in the game ahead of everybody else. And what we learned this morning is that anyone else who holds an MS4 permit still has obligations to meet the requirements of their permits. So they're not out of it by any means. They're not parties to the settlement, but they still have their obligations. The reason we appealed it is that we had limited data, and that led to the bathtub model. And ADEQ, as I understand it, admits in the settlement agreement that that may not be the right model, and that's why they're willing to continue monitoring for three, but not more than five years. So we get more data, we don't, we're not stuck with limited data, and we can come up with a better plan that we're more comfortable with, that's based on more solid, not, I don't want to say unlimited, but not limited by what we have now. So I'm convinced that going forward with this settlement agreement is the right thing to do, and it's not going to be an excuse to sit down, sit on our hands for five years. I really, I really think we're going to move forward, and I think everybody on the council, as some of us have expressed frustration in the last meeting, wants to see the lakes cleaned up. But we want it done in a cost-effective way, because we're spending a lot of public money, whether it's city of Prescott taxpayers or United States taxpayers. We're spending a lot of money to do it. So we've got to get the right plan in place to get the job done.
The TMDL stated everything you stated, for the reason to do the settlement. I still don't understand why the settlement needs to be done if the TMDL is written so explicitly. These were actually, these were, the reason I chose these, these were inserts to the draft based on comments from the public that specific reductions from each permittee is not quantifiable at this time due to the lack of knowledge of monitoring data. Again, they accepted it- Again, they accepted it in the settlement agreement, but they clearly identified it as an issue that needs to be addressed through the WIC, the Watershed Improvement Council, to address any discrepancies and incorporate the data and reductions. Actual reduc-, I mean, they're looking forward to reductions in all this. So, I understand I'm late, and I understand where you guys are coming from, if you've convinced yourself, but there's really no reason to vote for the settlement agreement, because it's all right here in the TMDL, every bit of it. Outlined, detailed, formatted, the whole thing. It's right there.
Charlie?
Mayor, with one clarification, I'm ready to prepare a motion. We need a settlement agreement because we're in active litigation. It's either we continue to litigate, or we settle so that we can walk away from litigation and proceed forward.
Correct. Or we dismiss the, we have three options, really. Settle what's proposed today, continue to go through this appeal process, as we talked about this morning. Depending on the outcomes, it can go from the administrative law judge to Superior Court to the Court of Appeals as a matter of right. And that can be, as we all know, years in the making. If it goes to the Arizona Supreme Court, if it's a big enough issue, that could be even more years. You know, the other option is, you know, the third option is to dismiss the appeal and just accept the TMDL as it's written, as we heard this morning. I think in just the shortest form possible, it's just based on bad science. I think that's a, that's a fair characterization, and maybe, you know, or at least insufficient science, and that's what we heard from staff, you know, the subject matter experts this morning.
So, if I can just briefly address why we should take the settlement agreement, what we're gaining from it. First and foremost is that additional data. As we discussed this morning, the model itself was based on only one year of water data. It was then tried to corroborate against two, and it wasn't effective. Under the settlement agreement, the new model will be based on at least four years of data, up to six years of data. That's significantly a better model. Additionally, the city will save between half a million and a million dollars, because we don't have the responsibility of developing our own new model to challenge the model that was developed by ADEQ. Under the settlement agreement, ADEQ is assuming that responsibility. Finally, through the settlement agreement, we're assured that ADWAR will be involved in the implementation plan. If that wasn't the case, ADEQ could choose whatever implementation plan they thought was appropriate, and we have to make it work with our water obligations. Under the settlement agreement, ADWAR will be involved in that process, and we can assure that our water supply is safe when we go forward.
Anyone else in the public? Charlie will take his motion.
Mayor moved to approve the settlement agreement with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality for the Watson Lake total maximum daily loads.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, go to H.
Item H, award of city contract number 2015-184 to AMC Foster Wheeler for the Upper Granite Creek Watershed and Watson Lake TMDLs and Stormwater Quality Monitoring Plan in amount not to exceed $114,000. This item was tabled at the 9/22/2015 meeting.
Mayor, council, the next item is the professional service agreement that goes hand-in-hand for us to move forward. The contract is divided into three tasks. The first two tasks provide technical and professional support on the TMDLs. AMIC has been assisting the city on the TMDLs under contract number 2013-147, which is nearly complete. The proposed contract will build off the work already performed under that contract. It has been discussed, the city has reached a settlement with ADEQ on the appeal of the Watson Reservoir TMDL. Therefore, AMIC services in support of the appeal has been removed, that legal has been removed from the contract. With the Watson Reservoir TMDL nearly final, the first task is to outline an action plan of the steps to develop a reservoir management plan, which is a requirement of the Watson Reservoir TMDL. The steps in the reservoir management plan may include additional collection of reservoir water quality data and the creation and calibration of models for the reservoir and watershed. This action will provide the foundation for identifying future projects that will provide feasible and cost-effective water quality improvements and help establish a long-term CIP planning. The second task is for a technical support analysis of the Granite Creek Watershed E-Coli TMDL. ADEQ released the draft TMDL for public comment in December 2014. AMIC provided city staff with a review of the document and model used to determine pollutant load reductions under the previous city contract. The proposed contract will provide for AMIC's continued support and analysis during the next steps of the TMDL process, similar to what was provided for the Watson Reservoir TMDL. The third task, the final task, is a contract to develop a stormwater quality monitoring plan. This is a requirement of ADEQ's MS-4 stormwater permit. The permit requires the city to develop a monitoring plan and begin monitoring municipal stormwater discharges to the impaired water bodies. In the meeting between ADEQ and the city staff that occurred in December 2014, the city agreed to develop a monitoring plan and has been providing ADEQ with monthly updates as far as our progress. We expect it will take a year to develop this monitoring plan. Once the city starts to collect monitoring data, it will be submitted to ADEQ as part of the MS-4 annual report. ADEQ will use this data to determine the compliance with the TMDLs and the stormwater permit. The stormwater monitoring data will have additional uses such as contributing to watershed modeling that may be performed as a future task. Funds for this professional service agreement are available through water, wastewater, streets, open space funds, as well as funding collected through the Aquifer Protection Fee in fiscal year 16. And with that said, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
You answered my question.
Oh, okay. Charlie?
Mayor, thanks. And Charles, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we've been pleased with the work that AMIC has done. We appreciate their patience while we worked through some of these other issues and look forward to seeing the progress that they make addressing some of these concerns. Hopefully, after they come through some of the phases of this, staff will be able to report back some updates to the council so that everyone's on the same page as to what's happening moving forward. I think the worst thing that can happen is, we deal with this today, and then two years goes by before we hear anything else about TMDL and water quality.
Jane?
Charles, do you know the amount that would come from the streets and open space fund for this contract?
I, Mayor, Councilwoman Wilcox, I don't know the breakdown, but I can definitely get that to you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Question. Is this with the understanding that we're going to have a presentation by staff every six months to keep us abreast of what's going on? That doesn't need to be part of the motion, does it?
We certainly will provide periodic updates, as discussed this morning, sure.
Thank you.
Mayor, move to award city contract number 2015-184 to AMC Foster Wheeler for the Upper Granite Creek Watershed and Watson Lake TMDLs and Stormwater Quality Monitoring Plan in the amount not to exceed $114,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, we're going to discuss the sign code.
Item I, discussion of sign code amendments.
Mayor and council, this is for discussion today, no action. Bringing this forward to you as, again, it provides some options regarding, regarding some sign issues. As you recall, at a public meeting, and we've had some other, I think, at least one public meeting, the case of, the Supreme Court case of Reed versus Town and Gilbert resulted in a decision that cities cannot impose different restrictions for different types of signs based on content. So, essentially, the Supreme Court said that different regulations based only on content, content of the sign are unconstitutional. So, what we've looked at in the, in the city code, primarily in Article 8 of the city code, and we'll talk about the land development code briefly today, and there'll be some additional issues or ideas brought forward for land development code, is that a significant part of the city sign code, primarily signs in the right-of-way and signs on private property, the sign code distinguishes between, has different standards for different types of signs based on content. So, although we know that in the, in Supreme Court decision that regulating signs based on content is not, is not allowed on, under the First Amendment, the, one of the, one of the concurring opinions, which didn't receive a majority of the Supreme Court, said the, that there are certain things that might be allowed, or certain types of regulation that might be allowed. And I emphasize "might" because, again, this wasn't part of the majority decision, but one of the concurring opinions. So, and those things, you know, that might be allowed to be regulated by municipalities are the size of the signs, location, lighted versus unlighted, fixed messages versus electronic signs or moving signs, LED signs, you've seen them on the freeways in Phoenix, you know, that change every eight seconds. Private versus public property distinction, commercial versus residential, essentially a zoning distinction, on-premise versus off-premise. Off-premise is just a fancy word for billboards. So, there are, because that's not based on content. If the city's going to allow signs in the right-of-way, temporary signs, there's a possibility that we could regulate the number of signs per mile of roadway, and then there may be an opportunity, and again, this is a push or a stretch, time restrictions on signs advertising a one-time event. The challenge with that's going to be, when it comes to, for instance, election signs, is that considered a one-time event, a one-day event, or is it a 30-day event? Because people essentially vote for over a 30-day period, and then if you have a primary and a general election, you know, how do, how does the city, how would the city deal with that? And that, so that, that one is a little, is still up in the air. I can tell you that I've had a number of meetings with, as part of the city, the Arizona City Attorneys Group, and talking about what cities are going to do in response to the Reed versus Gilbert. And I think it was said at a council meeting, and I think there's pretty much a consensus that when it comes to signs, temporary signage, especially in city rights-of-way, it's somewhat of an all versus nothing, or all or nothing type of decision. Once you allow signs in, it opens the door. There may be some limitations, like I said, based on sign, location, those types of things, but it opens the door for anybody from religious organization, a political group, a political campaign, a commercial advertiser, to essentially be able to put signs in, just as anybody else would. So, what legal department is recommending, at least providing, is an option, is this option, and that is to prohibit signs in the right-of-way or other public property. And we're talking about primarily temporary signs. There's been, there was a case that preceded Reed versus Gilbert by a number of years that the US Supreme Court addressed. In Los Angeles, the city basically banned all temporary signs in the right-of-way. So, whether it's a, you know, a box with a rock in it that says garage sale, whether it's a political sign, whether it's a event sign, or some religious or ideological sign, real estate sign, City of Los Angeles, City Council, a number of years ago, adopted a ban on those. And that case went all the way up to the United States Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court said, "If the city eliminates that, that communication option, it's not based on content." And the court found that there are plenty of other alternatives to communicating rather than putting signs in city rights-of-way. So, so that is sort of the, I guess, depending on which way you look at it, the nothing approach, or the no signs in the right-of-way approach, which we believe is constitutionally defensible. So, along those lines, there's a lot of parts and places in the city code that deal with, you know, signs in the right-of-way. The first one is Section 823. Right now, it allows for, and this deals with that statutory issue that was brought up during the election, or during the campaign, that dealt with campaign-free sign zones and this Title 16 statute. Our proposal on that is to ban all campaign or any other temporary sign in or on the city public right-of-way. And based, and what that, what that does is, is it deals with the Title 16 state mandate or attempted mandate to allow for essentially campaign signs or political signs everywhere but these campaign sign-free, campaign sign-free zones. And there's been considerable debate on what that sort of statute requires the city to do, but in essence, it prohibits the city from doing really four things: removing, defacing, covering up, and something else, I can't remember. But basically, physically removing that sign. So, what, and what Scottsdale does, and has always done, and what some other cities in the state have done in dealing with that statute, is say, "We can still make the placement of a political sign in the right-of-way illegal. We just simply, we can't send our staff out to remove those signs, to physically remove those." However, what cities that have this ban do is they send a letter to the campaign, and as you know, every campaign or every political action committee has to be registered, at least with the state, if not the local government, depending on the level of election. So, and we can, we can essentially send them a cease and desist letter that says, "Remove those political signs from the right-of-way," and we can, we can cite the campaign, or the event, or the real estate office, or whomever, and say, "Either you need to remove those, or we can fine you under our city code for violating, violating that prohibition." The difference, there's a little bit of a difference in enforcement, because when it, other than campaign, the removal or defacing or covering up of campaign signs is a misdemeanor. So, we certainly wouldn't want to send our, our staff folks out, whether it's the street, streets people, or the code enforcement people, to do that to a campaign sign, because we wouldn't want to direct them to commit any kind of misdemeanor. However, when it comes to other signs in the right-of-way that aren't campaign signs, we can physically remove those from the right-of-way if, if the ban is put in place. The next one is that, you know, we're adding another, another prohibition, because currently signage on tables, benches, and chairs in the right-of-way is allowed. This would ban signage on tables, benches, and chairs. So, in other words, if there are, because there is the ability to go get a permit to put restaurant seating, for instance, on the sidewalk, and this is strictly in the right-of-way. Now, we're not talking about outdoor seating on public, on a private property like a deck or outdoor patio, but if, if a restaurant, for instance, had a permit from the city to place chairs and tables, or benches out on, in front of its, its location, that would be allowed, but we wouldn't allow advertising or, or, you know, signage on those, on those benches, tables, or chairs.
Bus stop.
Well, we'll get to bus stops in a bit. That's a separate section of the code. Another provision, which is this, again, this is an option for the council. If you, if you choose to ban signs in the right-of-way, you can ban all signs in the right-of-way. This, this particular slide deals with an option to allow for sandwich board-type signs located within the downtown, the downtown Prescott area, which is a defined area, as long as it's one sandwich board sign in front of a permanent business location, when the adjacent business is open to the public, and placed in the right-of-way on behalf of the business. So, for instance, if the council were to choose that option, you're not choosing the content, you're choosing a physical form of sign. You know, and obviously, there are certain limitations in terms of size, and it can't block the sidewalk, create an ADA violation, create a traffic hazard, or something like that. So, this, this option would allow for sandwich-type board, sandwich board-type signs in the downtown area, which is Carlton, Marina, Sheldon, and McCormick, essentially that area that's defined in the, in the city code, as, as an, again, an option to, for the council if you wanted to allow those types of sandwich board signs in. Now, I would tell you that it doesn't matter what the type of business is. So, if it's a bar or restaurant, they could put a sandwich board sign out. If it's a retail establishment, it could put a sign out. If it's a church, or, you know, some sort of- If it's a church, or some sort of recovery center, it could put a sign out. And if it's a political campaign that's renting a space in front of the facility or the building, it could put a sign out. And we can't control the message. It's simply you get this physical space for a sign. The challenge, though, on some of these is, if you have a multi-use building, as we have on Gurley, where the Prescott Brewery is, the limitation would be one sign or one sandwich board. And of course, the business owners in there would have to, or the landlord would have to figure out who gets the sign and what the sign says. Maybe it's a generic sign for the facility or the building or not. But again, they wouldn't have, if there are 24 businesses in that building, they wouldn't get 24 sandwich boards.
But constitutionally, are you okay with telling me that it's okay to treat one business outside the district differently than the other business?
It is okay, because it's not content-based, it's essentially zoning-based. It's land use-based.
But you're giving competitive, you could be giving competitive advantage.
Okay, and I'm saying, this is an option to, if you want to restrict the clutter of signs in the right-of-way, but still want to allow for some, because historically, I think the downtown area does tend to have sandwich boards, not as much maybe as you go out. You could allow sandwich boards anywhere, in front of any business across the city, as a permitted right-of-way sign. It's a policy decision ultimately as to how much clutter is that going to create if you're going to ban all other kinds of signs, then you have these sandwich boards, one in front of each building. And certainly, you can't control what the message is. So every church, every real estate office, every pawn shop, every restaurant, every bar, in theory, if you opened it up to the city as a whole, could have a sandwich board sign of some type. Again, I think the other sort of land use planning kind of issue is, generally speaking, sandwich boards are sort of pedestrian-oriented, or if they're oriented to traffic, they're oriented to areas that have low-level or slow traffic versus on a main arterial, that sandwich board is probably not going to be necessarily as effective. So there is some logic to allowing it in the downtown area where it's mostly, it's primarily pedestrian-directed signage versus highway-type signage. Because we're talking, your typical sandwich board is maybe two or three feet tall and three by four. So, but again, these are options, and this is, you can ban them all together if you choose to allow them. I think you can allow them in certain, either the downtown area or some certain areas, or you can allow them citywide. That becomes an option for the council. Another prohibition is it would essentially get rid of all the exceptions. Because right now, what the city code says is, there's no temporary signs in the right-of-way, but then there's a bunch of exceptions, L, M, N, O, R. And essentially, it's saying the exception swallows the rule. That's what you see when you go out and drive along the city streets, is there's so many exceptions to the rule that there really is no rule anymore as far as signage in the Bus benches, there are a couple of options on bus benches. Currently, the city code talks about allowing for bus benches to be placed by the bus operator, only the bus operator, or bus operators, if there were more than one, at approved bus stops. And the approved bus stop is the bus stop determined to be approved by the Public Works Director. So the practical problem with that is, we have right now one, maybe two, sort of bus operators. It's not as if we're Phoenix or something, we have an actual municipal bus, and you have bus stops. This is a private operation, or operations that would allow for, wherever they wanted to try and put a bus stop, they could essentially have a bus, a bench with signage on it. But the current code doesn't allow for a nonoperator of a bus company to put in a bench. So the couple of options are to ban bus, I mean, certainly you can allow for bus benches and prohibit the signage. Or you could leave the current plan in place, because again, we're not controlling content, we're allowing for basically the form of sign, a bus bench at an approved bus stop. Or another option is to change the process and put out a bus, basically a bus bench bid. Put it out to bid, let the highest bidder, most responsible bidder come in, pay the city a certain sum, whatever that highest bid is, to put out buses in the city, bus benches in the city right-of-way on the sidewalk where the approved bus stops are. So if you have more than one bus company, and ultimately, you could have two, three, four, there's still only one essentially company that's allowed to put the bus benches in, and their revenue is essentially selling advertising on those bus benches. And it's sort of a controlled environment versus sort of a free-for-all. Because right now, it's somewhat of a free-for-all. So it also proposed, would propose to require insurance by this company, whether it's a clear channel, or whether it's a small bus billboard-type company, has to be at a bus stop, and we could create standards that would make sure that those benches are in a clean, safe, structurally sound condition, not create a blight or deteriorated type look. And then I think with the proposal, if we go that route, and this is just something to think about, there'd be some standards of what you, no bigger than so big, no movement, no lights, no nothing. And the city could revoke that permit, essentially that successful bidder would have to follow the rules if they didn't maintain insurance coverage, if they violated the rules for placement of bus benches, in other words, put a bench in a non-established bus stop, or if they didn't keep the benches in good workmanlike condition. The city could ultimately, if the bidder failed to cure the problems, the city could revoke that permit. And so those are some, again, some food for thought, I guess, in terms of an option for bus benches. So really, you have three: leave the current plan in place, ban them all together, or change the program so you have a sort of high bidder, high responsible bidder that would be allowed to put bus benches in. The next, by the way, going back to, a little bit back, the other prohibition when it came to private businesses putting benches and chairs and things, would also prohibit, it would allow for umbrellas. But the proposal would be to ban advertising on the umbrella. So if, you know, Councilman or Mayor Pro Tem Kuknia was in Europe, I think every umbrella you see in Europe has a Peroni or some advertisement on it. And so we would propose to ban those. So they could put umbrellas out, but they couldn't advertise beer, or soda, or whatever else on those. Because again, that would be, it'd open the door for umbrellas to advertise anything, rather than just, you know, the product. The other option, I mean, if you wanted to allow for the advertising umbrellas, we could create some rules that would limit the size of the lettering and that kind of thing. It's a little bit complicated, though, at that point. The next issue to talk about, and this came up a while back with Allison Zelm's, about the city's banner program. We sort of put it on hold, there was a proposal to do a city banner program downtown, basically city banners on the historic light posts. There is another exception to this Reed versus Gilbert case that says, government speech is not subject to the same restrictions as private protected speech. In other words, if the government chooses to put up signs, banners, for instance, in the downtown area, we don't have to then open the door for private speakers to basically put, communicate by way of those signs. So the city could adopt a banner program that allows for utilizing city-owned light poles, whether it's limited, again, to that downtown historic area, on the historic light posts, or whether it's citywide, to allow for the city to place, for a fee to cover the cost of administration, banners on light posts to promote events, to promote tourism issues like the lakes, museums like Charlotte Hall. And another, we've had a proposal, as you know, from Embry-Riddle, they want to put banners out near the university out there. We could allow for that, because we could add in educational institutions. So for instance, Prescott College would have the ability to put banners around Prescott College in that area, Yavapai College, and Embry-Riddle.
That brings the question, John. Craig, the light poles along front of Embry-Riddle, and their desire was to have their banner there, because their campus is so far back off the highway, you can't see, if you don't know the campus, is there with the exception of the entrance. And so they were looking for some means to identify this as Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University property. But are those APS poles?
I believe that they are actually city poles.
They are, okay.
Yeah, and if my recollection is incorrect, I will advise you otherwise, but I believe that they are city poles.
So we could have a program, for instance, that would allow for, again, the educational institutions, cultural civic events that are sponsored by the city, or nonprofit groups, tourist interest, activities, attractions, natural scenic locations. And the city could have a program where we would put up our own banners for our own events, and allow for the Charlotte Halls, or in this case, the three colleges to put up banners, or we would put up banners for them under certain conditions in certain areas, where we would charge a fee, really to cover the, it's not a revenue-generating opportunity, but it's basically a fee to cover the cost of the printing of the sign and the placement of the sign. So that would be an option, again, for the council. We would also propose to delete a section that allows for continuation of existing signs in the right-of-way, because obviously, that exception would swallow the rule. One of the things in working, Legal Department working with community development did, was trying to figure out a way to sort of compensate if the council does go in the direction of removing all signs, temporary signage, from rights-of-way, is to revise the land development code to sort of compensate for that, to allow for more temporary signage on private property, basically private, non-residential property. And the proposal to compensate for that is that up to 24 square feet per business parcel would be, the business would be allowed to put up a temporary sign. You'd have to get a permit, the permit's good for 90 days, you'd have to maintain it in good condition, and it would be city inspected. It could be a fee, again, to cover the cost of the program. The challenge with this is, this could be, you know, a 24-square-feet of signage, could be a Budweiser sale, or it could be a political campaign, it could be the rodeo, it could be the Corvette show. In other words, we would allow for whoever wants to communicate with the public with a temporary sign to deal with the business owner, the property owner, or the tenant, whomever. Get permission to place a sign on the private property to promote, again, an event, a sale, a something, a religious event, no matter what it is. Again, not content-based, strictly size-based, and allow for up to 24-square-feet of additional sort of temporary banner-type signs to be on the private property, rather than in the city rights-of-way. So it's an attempt to sort of make up for, you know, if the council chooses to ban signs in the right-of-way, this would be an attempt to sort of make up for some of that loss, I guess, of communication channel. We would recommend that if the council went that direction, there'd be a number of conditions that would be adopted or required to be followed, attached to a building wall or freestanding. They'd have to, when they come and get the permit, they would have to describe the location materials and how they're going to attach to the property. We obviously want to be inspecting for safety issues if one was sort of freestanding and had created a potential safety hazard, we would want to make sure that was dealt with. And so it would be a regulated temporary sign program for, again, for whomever wants to promote an event, or a campaign sign, or whatever, to deal with the private property owner, get their permission, and allow that sign to go on the private property. So this isn't Prescott, not least not tactically. But as we've seen during the campaign, there were strips of right-of-way that looked just like this. And the challenge is going to be, you know, do we, the challenge really for the council is, is do you want to adopt a ban? Yes, it is an enforcement issue, but, you know, but sort of clean up the clutter in the right-of-way from temporary signage? Or do you sort of open the door and have the possibility of this going on? Because it becomes very difficult to restrict or limit signs. And even if you were to, say, adopt some sort of X-sign-per-mile-type program, or X-number of signs per mile, that becomes an enforcement nightmare, because who is there first? How do you measure? I mean, I think it's harder to enforce a detailed plan like that than it is to have outright banned. Again, major policy decision on the part of the council. At this point, I know you all wanted to go to watch the Las Vegas debate, so subject to your questions, that's all I have for today.
Hey, I'd just like to kind of poll the council. Obviously, this is something, it's not going to happen in the next month or two. We had a system, it worked pretty good. It fell apart last election cycle for lots of reasons, and then the court decision. With council permission, it seems to me like this is an appropriate decision that should be left to Gene, and Steve, and Jim, and Greg, and Billy, and Steve. And I see Harry got up left before I could get there. But I really think that that's something that should happen down the road, if y'all would.
Mayor, if I may, add to that. You know, all these are, some of them are great ideas, and some of them are atrocious, and no offense. But whatever we do, I think needs to stay consistent and easy for the public to understand, not a staff member, because, I mean, it can get complicated for staff. But if somebody from the public, it doesn't show favoritism of who you are, where you are, but it needs to be consistent and fair and easy to understand at a glance for anybody that wants to do this or not do it. So that's all I'm asking for.
Well, Greg, if you'll remember, the purpose early on, several years ago, was so that our community did not look cluttered. And that was the real purpose, to keep our right-of-ways clear, open, and sidewalks where you could walk down them, rather than stumble over chairs and tables and signs.
Right, and I guess the point is, is if the code says, if, then, go to, and not this, but this, and possibly this, but not this, I'd be leaning towards just no right-of-way. And we'd stick to the right-of-way. I don't think we should go into private property. And if it's right-of-way, and it can't be easy, then let's just ban them all.
Also, just let me add one more thing, I forgot, is that this sort of minor or proposed change to land development code, Tom's here, is that the planning department, or the community development department is proposing, I think, down the road, to sort of do a revamping of all of the sign code provisions in the land development code. But that's a longer sort of process, and it's sort of separate from this case. So we can certainly bring this back to the new council, if that's your pleasure. I'll do this again, I enjoyed it.
Good.
Yep, Mayor, thanks. And I think the first meeting in December would be perfect scheduling. One area that didn't come up that I think would be valuable, because we've discussed it before, and that is the non-newspaper distribution containers that are in public right-of-way. If you go over by St. Michael's as an example, you've got the courier, and then there's five or six plastic boxes that aren't chained, anything, that are in the right-of-way. And those are throughout the downtown district, and that should be part of this conversation as well. When we had the big flood in downtown, all the ones that weren't chained washed down and clogged all the drainage ditches, they're not maintained, they're usually got graffiti. So it'd be worth adding that to the conversation for December.
Sure.
I think, Greg, I think Gene is going to volunteer right here to chair that committee.
No, but I do have another suggestion. I think this is a great way to raise money. We allow all the signs in, subject to size limitations and maybe some density, but they pay $100 per day for the privilege of using a publicly-owned right-of-way. I think we could pay for our police and fire that way.
Mayor, I thought we had a pretty good system going, and I thought the rules were fairly easy to understand, and we didn't have to go through all this. And then we had one guy lawyer up in a campaign, and now we're having to go through all this. You know, I thought what we had was working fairly well.
Well, this is certainly something that'll need to be worked on. And we've had things happen downtown with tables and chairs on sidewalks and other things that probably need to be addressed at the same time, so. So Billy, good luck. Steve?
Okay.
That's it?
Amen.
We're adjourned.